Okay, now we're moving on to AR twenty-one dash thirty-five Regulation Amendment, recreational medicinal marijuana. The public hearing, this was brought forward by the Regulations Committee of our commission in order to allow us to have a mechanism to hear from the public on their views about retail cannabis sales in our town. I do ask however that members of the commission, remember at this point in the process, our role is to listen to testimony of the public, not to say anything that would indicate that you've already made up your mind on an issue, that you are listening to the public and taking into account their concerns. John, can you give us a quick overview of what the new regulation is and what it would purport to do?
Sure, so for the record, John Guskowski Consulting Planner. So the state, as folks know, recently legalized recreational cannabis in, for both, both production in terms of growing and also retail sales. They're still developing their standards for licensure of both growing and retail operations. But it is clear that, two things, that municipalities are given zoning control over the allowance and location of these facilities, and second, that when it comes to retail, no community will be given more than one retail license per twenty-five thousand population. And so the total universe of cannabis retail establishments in Clinton will be, could be, could be one. That said, the commission, the planning, the Regulations Committee decided to take the approach of proposing to regulate as opposed to allow straight out or to prohibit outright. And the current proposal on the table is to regulate the location of cannabis dispensaries or retail stores in the same fashion as the town currently regulates liquor stores, which is to say it is a special exception, retail use, which means that it requires a public hearing to allow it in any district that would allow retail. And given the fact that we have some additional regulations in Section twelve point twenty-four of the zoning regulations, which is standards for special exception, they would, cannabis retailers would be subject to the same separation distances that a package store is currently, which is to say it shall, no facility would be located within five hundred feet of the property line for public, private, parochial schools, daycare centers, libraries, parks, playgrounds, or other recreational facilities in any zone, nor shall the businesses be located within five hundred feet of the property line of any church, convent, monastery, synagogue, place of worship, or cemetery. So those are all restrictions that would be placed on these, as well as the requirement to have public hearing input for a proposed location. So that's on the table.
Okay, thank you. Ellen, I skipped the documents.
Right, we have a document list for this. AR twenty-one dash zero-three-five Regulation Amendment, recreational and medical marijuana, the African Town Clinton Planning and Zoning Commission. The documents are, include Regulation Amendment markups, two, public hearing legal notice, three, RiverCog comments dated twenty-nine July two thousand twenty-one, four, letter from Clinton Partners in Community and Morgan React, R-E-A-C-T, I think that's an acronym, dated thirty-one August two thousand twenty-one, five, an email from Sydney Giuliano dated thirteen September two thousand twenty-one, and six, a letter sent by email from Shelby Alletta dated thirteen September two thousand twenty-one.
Okay, thank you very much. At this time, I would like to go to the public and allow testimony to begin from the public. I want to try to limit your discussion to three minutes. I am not going to have a hard clock on this. I had been thinking I would, but I changed my mind. I'd like you to try to limit yourself to three minutes. If after everyone has had an opportunity to speak, you feel you have something new to present, you will be permitted to come back and speak again, as long as it's providing new information to the commission. With that, I want to, I'm going to go through the public in the order that they are in the chat, because there, I don't think I can easily separate those in opposition from those in favor, and so it'd be better for me to just do it in the order that they came in. So I will start with Vincent DeMayo, Vincent DeMayo, gosh, I can screw up anybody's name. At five, Laurel Red Circle, would you like to speak, sir?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you, and thank you Commissioners. I'm here tonight to speak in opposition of allowing the retail sale of recreational cannabis here in Clinton. I have a number of public safety concerns attached to that. I know that we hear that the tax revenue is the great offset, and that's why we have pushed recreational marijuana. However, if you look at the studies from Colorado and California, it creates a severe black market, it doesn't eliminate the black market at all. As a matter of fact, California just a week ago paid a one-hundred-million-dollar bailout to their legal cannabis industry because they are having a difficult time competing with the black market, and that is going to come to our town, because I'm sure Madison's not going to have one, Guilford's not going to have one, Westbrook's probably not going to have one. We would be the sole town on the shoreline. That's concern number one, the policing the black market. Secondly, attached to that, as the legislature has found fit to greatly restrict our enforcement of these types of crimes, especially for juveniles, we have a real enforcement concern. People that are selling cannabis on the black market, more than likely near the retail establishment, because that's where people are going to be going to buy it. You've seen the problem already exacerbated with the stolen cars and the state's legislature's restrictions on us being able to enforce those laws. We have the same kind of setup with this two-hundred-and-ninety-page cannabis legislation. The other piece that I'm also concerned about is our ability to enforce driving under the influence of narcotics, cannabis. More than likely, if we have a dispensary or a retail sale facility here in Clinton, we are going to have more people operating their motor vehicles under the influence of cannabis. Right now, there is no standardized testing like there is for alcohol. It's very clearly delineated, we know how your body metabolizes alcohol, we have tests for proper enforcement. Right now, there is absolutely none of that for cannabis. So we have really no enforcement mechanism, again, creating a greater public safety risk here. I'm not going to prattle on about the many other issues that I think it's going to draw as far as degradation quality of life and drain on public safety. I think it's clear that there will be a drain on public safety, just as alcohol establishments drain our public safety resources, cannabis will as well. There's plenty of people I see signed on here that can give you more of a neighborhood, and maybe the aspects of quality of life issues, so I'm not going to continue on with that, I'll let them say their piece. But I am opposed to it as a resident, as a father, and as obviously the Chief of Police, because I think it creates a serious public safety drain for all of us here, and I would urge you to not pass legislation to allow a retail cannabis facility here in Clinton. I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Okay, our next person to testify is Kim English, who wants to testify in opposition. Kim, did I screw up your last name terribly?
That's okay, I am also one of the ones who signed the letter that you received, and I apologize if any of the things that I'm about to say is repetitive. So my name is Kimberly English, and I wrote a letter, so I'm going to read it. I've been a resident of Clinton for forty-eight years and a member of Partners in Community for over a decade. I'm here to voice my concerns and oppose any proposal to permit marijuana businesses in our town. Several Connecticut towns have already placed moratoriums on cannabis businesses or completely banned retail pot shops. In fact, following the legalization of marijuana, up to seventy percent of towns in Colorado, 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 California, New Jersey, Massachusetts banned retail pot stores. What do the majority of those towns know, that the other thirty percent does not? They know that having pot businesses in their towns is the equivalent of having a daily pot advertisement in one's community. Any resident family, more importantly, our youth, that walks, bikes, or drives by a retail pot store will be exposed to marijuana publicity. Allowing a cannabis business in our town would be no different than having a permanent marijuana billboard in our town that advertises the sale of THC products, which ironically is against the law, as a billboard's audience is more than twenty percent of those under the age of twenty-one. If we want to attract young families in Clinton, having a pot shop on Main Street could be a deterrent. Most of the New Jersey Shore towns ban retail marijuana businesses to keep their communities and vacation spots family-friendly. Why wouldn't we want our quaint, family-minded shoreline town to do the same? According to a recent study in California and Smart Approaches to Marijuana's Twenty-Twenty Lessons Learned from Marijuana Legalization Report, marijuana dispensary density was linked to more pot use among youth, with twenty-four percent of eighth graders using pot in areas with higher dispensary density compared to sixteen percent in areas with less pot dispensaries. What else might these seventy percent, what else might these towns, the seventy percent in other states that ban marijuana businesses know that you might not know? Youth perception of marijuana's harm has decreased over time due to state legalization and commercialization of cannabis. We're sending the completely wrong message to our youth. According to the University of Michigan's Monitoring the Future Survey, daily marijuana use by youth increased dramatically, with six-point-four percent of twelfth graders reporting near daily pot use in two thousand and nineteen. Recreational marijuana legalization has also led to a twenty-five percent increase in adolescent cannabis use disorder in legal marijuana states. Youth marijuana use has also been associated with an increase in mental health disorders and teen suicides. In Colorado, marijuana is detected in thirty percent of suicide toxicology reports for kids aged fifteen to nineteen in two thousand and seventeen. According to the two thousand and nineteen Rocky Mountain High Intensity Drug Trafficking Area Report, and Washington Poison Center, calls to poison control centers went up by a hundred-and-twelve percent in Colorado and a hundred-and-three percent in Washington between two thousand and thirteen and two thousand and nineteen. Poison control calls involving young children with unintentional marijuana exposure nearly tripled in Washington in five years. In Colorado, youth cases of marijuana-related exposures increased a hundred-and-twenty-six percent from two thousand and thirteen to two thousand and eighteen. And according to the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment, yearly marijuana hospitalizations increased a hundred-and-one percent from two thousand and thirteen to two thousand and seventeen. Crime rates have also risen at a faster rate, a faster rate in legal pot states than those who have not legalized and commercialized marijuana. According to Sam's two thousand and twenty report, Denver, Colorado neighborhoods saw eighty-four-point-eight more property crimes each year than those without a retail pot shop. My point in sharing of all these disturbing statistics is that Clinton should be prioritizing public health and safety over an addiction-for-profit industry. We should be inviting businesses that promote mental health and physical wellness into our community and doing everything we can to decrease youth pot use, prevent teen suicides, prevent more hospitalizations and calls to poison control centers, and to reduce property crimes. I personally do not want our youth or our town to become part of these negative statistics and feel we have an obligation to do what our state legislators fail to do. Protect our youth and make public health and safety a priority over businesses selling a product whose sole purpose recreationally is to get one high. Let's join the seventy percent of towns in those other states that have done the right thing and weren't swayed by only tax revenue, which only represents one side of the balance sheet and not the overall legalization cost. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our next person to speak is Erin Godet, and she wants to speak in opposition. Erin?
Okay, of course my dogs are barking now that I'm on. My name's Erin Godet. I am going to read a letter that I wrote. So I've been a resident of Clinton for the, for almost twenty-five years. I'm writing today in opposition of any medicinal and recreational retail marijuana and dispensary in Clinton. I have a story to tell, and I hope it's not long, because I can be long-winded. I grew up in Madison and married a fellow Clintonite. When I was in sixth grade, my brother was in seventh. I came home from school and told my parents I saw him smoking pot. From then, it was years of rehabs, in and out of school, a little trouble with the law. It was constant, all through middle school and high school. I was cut from the field hockey team when I was in high school because my brother was smoking pot. I'll never forget what the coach said, "Sorry, your brother's into drugs, can't have the girls around that." Now, keep in mind, I was a freshman, he was a sophomore. The horrific name-calling because of my brother, because of my brother, but again, I wasn't into any of that. My brother was acting out more, trying other drugs, now in and out of Danielham High School. Junior year, my parents thought it would be a good idea to send me to Mercy. I lasted there for a semester. Why? Because I got my wisdom teeth out and a friend called and asked if she could buy my pain meds. I told her off on the phone and turned around to my parents staring at me. After a long talk, they agreed to send me back to Han to finish high school. They knew I could and would stand up for myself. My brother and I graduated high school together, class of nineteen ninety. My youngest sister, who at the time was in eighth grade, was recruited to play soccer in Minnesota. While playing there, she hurt her leg so badly that she never played again and was using pot to cope, and not only her physical pain, but also she was too scared to play soccer and wanted to just forget all about it. All through high school, again, in and out of rehabs, but with her, it was pot use and now an eating disorder. By this time, I was in college and wasn't around much. So now I have two siblings in and out of rehab. It's the old story of sober for a bit, then back to the drug, starting always with pot, then getting worse from there. My brother was in and out of my life for years, missing out on so much, including my wedding and the birth of my four kids. My sister, she tried real hard and got married, had a job, but neither lasted. I tell people, my siblings died of addiction. The truth is, at the age of thirty-four, my brother committed suicide. After years of suffering, he thought the only way out was for him to die. He called me nine days after I had my youngest daughter, and I refused to talk to him. And the next morning, he was dead. That was sixteen years ago. My sister passed away from years of torment to her body, which includes addiction and an eating disorder. Crazy thing is, my sister had cancer and she survived, yet she just could not overcome her demons of addiction. I sat in hospice with my sister, holding her hand for three days, when she took her last breath in two thousand and eighteen at the age of forty-two. So for all the people that say it's only marijuana, yeah, it was only marijuana when my brother and my sister started. And for all those that say it's only marijuana, have you even lost a family member or sat holding their baby sister's hand when she took her last breath? I've heard from so many people, Guilford is culture, Madison is class, Clinton is clams. Clinton is more than clams. We are all doing our part and making wonderful improvements to attract people to our town. Clinton has had so much sorrow and great losses over the years, we can't afford to lose anyone else. I beg of you not to allow any form of marijuana allowed in Clinton. Show our youth they matter. Show our youth they're our future and we believe in them. It's not just marijuana, it is addiction and it's death. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our next speaker or next testimony will come from Mary Jo Phelps. Mary Jo?
Thank you. Yeah, Mary Jo Phelps, twenty-three Delwood Avenue. I am neutral on the application, but I do want to point out that in our town of a little over thirteen thousand people, we have five liquor stores and innumerable package stores because alcohol is legal. You know, I just, recreational marijuana is legal and, and so is alcohol. I don't, I don't know that I, you know, I guess I'm not in favor and I'm not against. I just wanted to make a point of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Andrea Rowe. Andrea?
Good evening, members of the Planning and Zoning Commission. My name is Andrea Rue, I live at seventy-eight Waterside Lane. I am a founding member of Partners in Communities many, many years ago. I am an involved and active member of our community. I have a request that the Planning and Zoning Commission not rush into amending any regulations. A moratorium would be palatable, but I think it would be in our best interest to just take a firm position at this point and say no, thank you. Clinton zoning regulations has a reputation of being loose and easily overcome. I think in a case of recreational marijuana, this could open the door for way more of a culture than we anticipate. There are those who will argue that cannabis is legal and, as is alcohol, the culture is different. I think that bringing that kind of an environment, and I actually invite members of Planning and Zoning to visit a neighboring states dispensaries and see the kind of environment that is in the parking lot that surrounds it. It's, we can pretend that it doesn't exist, but it does. We are a small community, and that kind of an element will have a significant cost, not only in policing in our community, but I think the expense will far outweigh any potential revenue. I ask that you not be speedy and consider all the impact on all members of our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, our next testimony will come from Laura Colbank. Laura?
Good evening, thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. Laura Colbank, eight from Run Lane. I am strongly opposed to a marijuana retail store in Clinton for many reasons already stated by others tonight. I have a major concern about the impact on teens, and the bottom line, the costs far outweigh any perceived benefits, as proven in other states that have legalized marijuana. Therefore, I request the town oppose or at least delay a decision on any retail store at this time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next person to speak to us is Eric Anderson. Eric?
Hi, thank you for letting me speak. I just wanted to touch base, I'm in favor for this, by the way, a touch base about especially what this would do to our youth. Clinton is actually receiving two-hundred-and-eighty-nine-thousand dollars a year up until two thousand and twenty-four to help with youth substance abuse programs and stuff like that. So I think, and especially with the great parents that we have in this town who are going to make sure that our teens are not using, I really have to remind you guys that I, that these laws are not for our kids. Nobody is trying to sell our youth marijuana, you know, so this is a huge investment opportunity for Clinton. With other towns surrounding us not allowing sales or waiting, this is the time to act on this. So we would be, every time somebody buys marijuana in this town, they will be investing in Clinton. This is money that is just for our general fund. I mean, especially with the state of Connecticut already putting money toward more substance abuse programs, I can, you know, every time I would buy marijuana in this town, I'd be investing in Clinton. Every time somebody would come from out of town, they'd be investing in Clinton. During, especially during the summer months, people from out of state would be investing in Clinton. And I would also like to remind everybody that we do, like Mary Jo Phelps, I think, said, said that there's already five or six liquor stores, and what is that saying to our youth? You know, we have a winery, we have a liquor store and a CBD store and a wine-making store right across the street from where your kids play soccer. So, you know, and me raising two children myself, I understand the concern, but it is up to us as parents to allow, you know, to make sure that our kids understand the consequences of young alcoholism and young, you know, drugs and everything like that. So I think this is a huge opportunity for Clinton, and as far as traffic goes, you're going to see cities like New London, New Haven, and even Haddon is trying to get a dispenser in their town. And if Branford changes their medical marijuana dispensary in, into a hybrid dispensary, then you're going to get the traffic from Guilford. So we're not going to really be seeing a huge amount of traffic of, we're going to get the traffic from people who are already coming into this town. So I would really hope that you guys make the right decision and approve this, because we're not going to see people smoking down Main Street. We're not, nobody wants to go smoke on the green, nobody wants to go smoke down at your beaches, we just want to legally be able to buy marijuana and not have to travel far for it. So I think that if you guys make the decision yesterday, you are saying yes to investing in this town, and we may not need the money now, but later down the road, especially in the world that we live in today, we have that extra money on hand to put into our budget. So, and a vote no today, strictly on today's youth, I have to remind you that these laws are not for our kids, they are for adults twenty-one and older. So, thank you.
Thank you. Our, the next testimony I have is from Shelby Alletta. Now, I don't know if you wanted to speak, you put in that you had already sent us a letter today, but Shelby, if you want to speak, this is your opportunity.
Sure, I can read what I sent in. So, thank you for the opportunity. So I'll read my letter. So ladies and gentlemen of the Planning and Zoning Commission, I am writing as a concerned citizen to request that the Planning and Zoning Commission not rush to approve its proposed amendment to the zoning regulations to allow recreational and medical cannabis businesses, and instead place a moratorium on such businesses in the town of Clinton. Clearly amending the regulations opens the door for an application for the one Clinton license. In consideration of the fact that Connecticut only just passed the legislation legalizing recreational marijuana effective July one, two thousand and twenty-one, it seems prudent to perform research and fully investigate potential issues and to be prepared to address potential adverse effects on neighborhoods and businesses in vicinity of any zone approved for the sale and dispensing of recreational and medical cannabis. As a member of the committee which often arranges town-wide litter cleanups, I have personally picked up hundreds of nip alcohol containers in the parking lot behind East Main Wine and Liquor. Patrons go into the store, buy the nip, and immediately consume the alcohol. Logic indicates the same will happen with a cannabis retailer. And well beyond the issue of just litter is the consideration of the nature of a cash business and potential related crime, as well as impaired driving with little enforcement power by the Clinton police under this new legislation, as Chief alluded to earlier. Furthermore, according to a recent study in the Journal of Health Communication by Washington State University researchers, advertising and location of cannabis retailers influences adolescents' intentions to use marijuana. There is so much to be considered. Several Connecticut municipalities have already adopted a ban on cannabis sales, and several others have announced moratoriums. A moratorium would better serve the citizens of Clinton than rushing to amend the zoning regulations today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next testimony will be coming from Kelly Edwards.
Hi, good evening, I'm Kelly Edwards from one-fifty Nod Road. I am the coordinator for Partners in Community in Town, and I'm also a parent to teenagers. So the first thing I want to just clarify is that any tax income that we would receive as a town does not go to the general fund. The law states that it has very specific uses, and none of them are the general fund. They are youth and family programming, they are road improvement around where the dispensary would be and things like that. So make sure we know all of our facts about where the money can be used and where it cannot. Also, on the note of income, if you look at the document that we wrote in our letter the document that we wrote in our letter and that Kim English referred to several times about the impact of legalization, the actual ratio of expense to income is for every dollar that other states are getting in income, they're finding that they're $3.50 to $4.50 in expenses. And those are what many people have said, they are crime, they are traffic accidents. They are problems with employees that are using and not being productive. So those kinds of things. One thing to note that has not been brought up tonight is that cannabis retailers can only operate in cash. Because the federal government and thereby banks do not recognize cannabis industry as legitimate. All the business has to be done in cash. So we would have a shop that has a lot of cash and a lot of product. And if you, you know, if you think that that wouldn't be a target for crime, you're crazy. We have kids breaking into our cars to steal $15. If they know that there's a safe of cash in there, it's absolutely going to be something that gets targeted. So as the chief alluded to, I think being real about what crime we might be inviting in is really important to do. There have been a lot of comparisons to our alcohol. Alcohol and tobacco, if, if everybody really thinks about it, have been two seriously failed industries. I think all of us on this call can sit and say, we know somebody who's been addicted to either alcohol or tobacco or both. And they're really struggling to get off of it. I too have friends and family members that have passed away due to those addictions. And so much research has proven that marijuana is indeed an addictive substance, no matter how many people want to claim it's not. With the high levels of THC, especially for our young people with their developing brains, addiction is going to happen. I know that we have children in our Morgan School right now that are in treatment for marijuana addiction. And I just know because of my work in prevention that when we have a dispensary or retail in town that increases the access to the product to our young people, it decreases their perception of harm of the product, which ends up increasing use. The reason we have a $289,000 a year grant that I wrote, we have that grant because we have substance use issues in town. It's not something we want to publicize, but we do. If anybody wants all of the data I have from 2019 and we are re surveying our seventh through 12th graders this fall, and we will have a brand new set and a brand new bunch of numbers that I know marijuana is going to be higher. We had one in four seniors saying that they had smoked marijuana in 2019 and there's no doubt in my mind that that number is going to be higher because Connecticut has legalized. I work very closely on a daily basis with Morgan students. And they have told me that they don't want to be the drug town of the shoreline. They already feel like we are known as the armpit of the shoreline. This is a quote from students. And they're worried that, that this will become the drug town. And no, nobody wants to sell to young people. You know, I'm sure if a business were to come to town, they would do whatever they could to prevent it. But sadly, you know, our liquor stores are fooled. Right now with, with the advent of the TikTok app, the kids have greater access to fake IDs than they've ever, ever had in my 20 years of doing prevention. That's actually something we're going to add to the survey. So while I can work in prevention and the members of my coalition are awesome and supportive. It's like whack a mole. No matter how much work we do, there is always more to be done. You know, I can educate all of our, our shop owners, but that doesn't stop every youth from trying to access what's out there. I want to make one more comment and I appreciate your, your patience with me. Going back to perception of harm really quick, one of the, the measurements within prevention that we look at is how much do kids think they will either get in trouble or get hurt by a certain substance? For marijuana, since 2012, our numbers of kids thinking that marijuana is dangerous is rapidly falling. When we surveyed in 2019, only 64% of our seventh graders thought that it was dangerous to use it. That's down from 86 two years prior. Our eighth graders, only 70% thought it was harmful. And that's down from 80% two years prior. Our seniors, it's less than 35% think it's harmful. And when that number is there, combined with peers that support the behavior and a town that they think supports the behavior, we are going to have more kids smoking and using high THC products. And in a town that has really had way too much tragedy and loss of young people, I beg of our, our town government, our leaders, our decision makers, please consider our young people, consider their mental health. The use of marijuana is directly tied to suicidal ideation and depression. Please support our kids. They're doing the best they can through a pandemic. And by bringing marijuana to town, it's a message of, hey, it's not that bad. It's just pot. But, but it is that bad for our teens. And so I ask you to join us and support us and keep public health the first priority. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have testimony from Joe Al. Joe? Did I lose you? I saw you there earlier.
Okay. Can you hear me now, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I would first of all like to say how valuable an asset this Kelly Edwards is. This is a woman of uncommon spunk and courage. And if I was in another town, I'd be looking to grab her because she is an asset, more so than many department heads and many politicians that we have in this town. She's quite a lady. Now, we had Chris Heron here a few years ago. For those of you that don't remember him, he was a recruit in Boston College, got involved with drugs, certainly harder than marijuana. And it derailed his professional career, so much so that he was taking layups in the line at, at the Boston Garden with the Celtics at the tail end of his career. He went out to the street to see his drug dealer. He appeared at Morgan a few years ago when he did so. And I saw him at Sacred Heart University where I asked, how about marijuana and the proposed decriminalization at that time? He thought he was, he said it was against it. It's a gateway drug and I feel the same, the same way. State police in New Jersey, the commissioner several, several weeks ago stated his officers are overwhelmed by youth smoking pot. They don't have the force, the will, the legislation to control that. And as Chief DeBaio has mentioned, in Colorado and in California and other areas, there is the black market where these youth can, can buy marijuana. When Massachusetts legalized pot, I was watching TIC up in Hartford or the other stations where they had cameras set up at a recreational store in Massachusetts. As I looked at the line of people, and there was a formidable line of people outside waiting to get in, I couldn't tell the difference between that and the soup kitchen in Middletown or Bridgeport. The disheveled people, dispirited people, sloppy looking people, frankly losers. That's who was, that's who was in the, that's who was in that line. I find it quite interesting that our beloved state Senator, Mr. Needleman, Mr., to me, he's spineless, quite frankly, and a hypocrite. Mr. Needleman, of course, voted with his urban brothers and sisters who are the force behind this legislation to legalize marijuana. And when Mr. Needleman was asked about, how about legalizing it or how about putting a store in Essex? Guess what he said? I don't think it's for Essex. That's what Mr. Needleman said. Why? Are they better than us? Are they nicer than us? Are they more honest than us? Are they more hardworking? Are they better parents? Are they better citizens in Essex? I don't think so. This whole thing is a ploy to get money into the state because the governor lied about tolls. And now he's afraid everybody in Fairfield County is going to move out. Do any of you want your son or daughter going out with a pothead? Do you want your grandchildren in a house where the mother and father are smoking pot? I don't think so. That's what this is about. I don't think I have anything else to say.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay. The next testimony is from Shelby, I'm going to screw up your name, I'm sorry. Mehmet?
Hey, you got it right.
Okay.
Thank you very much for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Shelby Mehmet from Commerce Street. I want to share that I've grown up in Clinton my, my whole life. I was involved in high school and many of the pro-social organizations in town and within the Morgan community. And I went away to school and now I'm back working with Kelly for Partners in Community. And really working to promote positive decision-making, positive environment and foster environment where young people and adults in the Clinton community can make healthy decisions for our community and for ourselves. So I just want to speak a little bit tonight about how today's marijuana and today's weed is different than the weed in the 60s and 70s. That THC content is, has grown significantly, like sixfold since then. And it can be an average of 12 to 15% higher and with some marijuana products having 98% THC, which is very dangerous as well. So I also want to talk about how when I was in high school and when I was in college, the disparities that I've seen between young people using marijuana and those who haven't and how their, their IQ and their ability to succeed well in school has declined and really prevented some of my classmates from graduating, unfortunately. The linkage between one's IQ and marijuana use is directly related to the pruning process of brain development. So when that happens, it's kind of like when our brain prunes, we want it to be cut with a scalpel. So those connections are pruned precisely to improve brain function. But when young people below the age of 25 use marijuana, it's like cutting that connection with a, with a sledgehammer and those connections are jagged. And those processes in our brains don't work well. And they, they promote those connections to be, to be a lot slower than they could be. And also, I have my degree, my master's degree in social work and also taken many classes and researched topics about substance use and the linkage between mental health and the use of marijuana increases the likelihood of depression, psychotic episodes and anxiety and promotes risky behaviors and dangerous behaviors, which has resulted in deaths. And I personally don't want to see that happen any more than it already has in Clinton and in the community that I grew up in. Also linked with marijuana's use in a reward center of our brains, that is not fully developed in teens, which increases the likelihood of young people to become addicted to marijuana use. And that those feelings that getting high can create, which then in turn can lead them to craving that stronger high because their brain is developing and getting used to that as they're growing. And I know the law and the, and everything is geared towards adults. However, that's increasing the likelihood or the ability and access to that young people have if adults have it in their home or in their cars or wherever it may be out in town. It's easier access and it's if it's like, if it's an edible, if some kids don't know the difference between a gummy bear that has marijuana and a gummy bear that doesn't, or chocolate that does or doesn't. My niece, every time she sees a bag of M&amp;M's, she's like, I want that instead of those raisins right there. So, and I worry that other young people and other children won't know the difference between a cookie or a soda that has marijuana in it and ones that don't. And I just, I fear that allowing different opportunities for marijuana use in Clinton and the the stores and its presence will increase that as well. And I fully believe that putting a ban or at least a moratorium sends a message to our Clinton community, our young people and our adults and our residents in Clinton that our government cares about, our Clinton government cares about its residents and its young people in town. And they're willing to, we're willing to put our, the health of our residents and our young people, both physical and mental health and well-being ahead of income in Clinton.
Thank you very much. Let's see, we have next David Lillo. David?
I think it was Shannon.
Did I skip Shannon? I'm sorry, Shannon.
I'm like, did I actually hit send when I put my?
Okay.
Hi.
Shannon error, I'm sorry. I apologize.
So my name is Shannon Aaron. I live at 13 James Vincent Drive and I've lived in Clinton for over 20 years. I'm a parent in the community, which is my first job, and I couldn't be more opposed to this as a parent. I think the other people have done an excellent job speaking about the effects on the teens. I just wanted to add an additional element. I've also had the benefit that I worked for an insurance company and I've investigated auto accidents for over 30 years. And this is just going to send a wrong message to our youthful drivers. And the people who are coming into town, I completely disagree with the person who was in favor of it, that you know, it's not that they're going to be smoking it here and our teens aren't going to be smoking it. The people are coming into town, are buying it here, they're going to smoke it and then they're going to get in their cars and they're going to drive. And it's going to increase the amount of auto accidents in our town. We're inviting all these people into our town. And smoking marijuana is driving under the influence. And I can tell you firsthand after doing investigating car accidents, fatalities, all types of tragedies for over 30 years, this is not something we want in our town. And it's not the message we want to send our youth. So I'm significantly opposed to it as a parent, as a community member, and it would just be terrible for Clinton, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now, now David Lillo.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm the director of Clinton Human Services. I get to work with Kelly, who you've heard, who you heard about before as well, there's Shelby and to let you know how hard we work to try to get kids not to use and the success that we had over the decades until medical marijuana became legal and then we began to with one product, find it harder with marijuana to keep it down. It's easy to say you're going to have more money and no one's going to sell to kids. It just never happens. You could look at every example in every state. When this becomes legalized, more kids use. It's a big, it's okay kind of feeling. I've worked with young kids for 40 years. The kids that are involved usually think it's the best thing in the world and this is giving a stamp of approval. And not only that, because it has been legalized, but if you live in a town with a dispensary, your outcomes are worse than if you don't live in a town with a dispensary. So it's not only that the overall law is going to set us back. It is that if we put a dispensary in town, it'll set us back even more. So I would ask people to please help us in the, the struggle that we love working with your kids and not make it one step worse in terms of trying to keep things moving in the positive direction it's been going in 10 years. Thank you.
Thank you. Next to testify, Kelly Simberra.
Hello.
Hello.
This is Kelly Simberra. And just real quickly, yeah, I'm in agreement with what people are saying. You know, personally, I, I You know, personally, I, I don't think that, um, you know, having a dispensary in our town sends the right message. Um, I've been an educator for 15 years. So I, you know, I, I understand the influence that these things have on young kids. And on a personal level also, you know, I have a daughter, I, I don't want this being normalized for her. I don't want her growing up in Clinton and passing, um, a marijuana shop every day and just, you know, part of her normal life as if it's a grocery store or, um, a Dunkin' Donuts. So, um, that's, that's my two cents and, um, I'm, I'm in opposition to that. Thank you.
Thank you. At this point, I don't see any, uh, additional people with, um, information in the chat. So I would like to know if there's anybody else who wants to, uh, testify. If you do, please put your name in the chat. We're particularly interested if you have new information.
Mr. Chairman, I, I like to make, I like to say one thing.
Well, Ed, I think you should wait, I think you should wait until we're in deliberation.
Did it?
Because that's Yeah, I, because in deliberation is where members of the commission should be talking. Okay. Is there anybody else from the general public that would like to speak?
Can I just make one more comment that Westbrook and Old Saybrook have both, their planning and zoning commissions have agreed to put a moratorium on this decision. And, um, there are several communities in the state that have done the same. And there are some that have absolutely banned it entirely. Vernon and Southington, um, have decided to ban it entirely. So just as we're looking at our neighbors, um, side to side and what I know to be true about Madison and Guilford and the likelihood of, of them permitting those businesses. Our neighbors are, are following along in the prohibition lane, it's so, so to speak. Um, so I just wanted that on record as well.
Thank you, Kelly. Okay, uh, we also have, um, let's see, Nancy Dar, I believe is, uh, signed in to speak.
Hi, uh, this is Nancy Dar, thank you for the opportunity. I, I don't have other additional new information except everything that's been presented. But I was going to, as Kelly just mentioned, I was going to say there's a lot of our neighboring towns who are at least, um, putting a moratorium. And I guess I would urge Clinton to kind of await and see, um, for all the reasons people had said. I, I appreciate that. It is, it is legal, it is not intended for our children, but our youth, um, will get their hands on it. And the developing teenage brain is at risk. Um, and so I guess I would ask, um, Clinton to at least do a wait and see a moratorium and consider the opportunity to see how, how this plays out in other towns and also consider the input from, um, uh, you know, citizens of the town.
Thank you very much. I believe the next testimony is from Maureen Wellman. No, okay.
No, I'm here.
You're here? Okay, okay.
Just having difficulties unmuting.
Okay.
The one thing I'd like to say that might be a little different is I would like each person on the planning and zoning commission to just think of the downtown areas and the other towns, think of Guilford's downtown. Think of Madison's downtown. Old Saybrook's downtown. Think of what they have, what you might want to go there for. Now think of Clinton's downtown. It wasn't that long ago, we had a massage parlor open up, then ended up being a house of prostitution. It got raided. We had a tattoo parlor, nothing wrong with tattoos, that closed down. You, you think of, the one bright spot in the downtown we have is Cindy Stevens in that art area. That, that has been such a, a welcome to this town. Now people come here from outer town, they got something to do, they got something to see. We don't have a, a, a thriving, active downtown. I, 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 these other towns don't want this, uh, don't, they don't want. So again, compare their downtowns to what we have. And it, it just, it wouldn't fit in, I don't think it's right. I understand it's for 21 and older. I appreciate all that, I've been an educator for 42 years and I know how easily kids are swayed. So I would just really hope that the planning and zoning people listen to the people that have spoken here. Because I'm sure that this is a microcosm of what's, of, of what, I don't, I bet you haven't had a meeting like this in years. So I really hope you do the right thing and consider what everybody has said here today. No one stacked this. I was out in the kitchen making dinner and, and I jumped in, so, uh, anyhow, thanks for letting me speak in, in, in vent. I, you know, I keep thinking, my favorite movie in the world is It's a Wonderful Life. And I just don't want Clinton to turn into Potter's Hill. I wanted to stay Bedford Falls. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um, and we have Sharon Clark, who is asking to speak.
Hi, um, I am Sharon Clark, I'm Mary McLupen, uh, here in town. I've lived in Clinton for 30 years, raised, uh, four children and now am raising a 12-year-old grandson. And, uh, this is pretty, pretty emotional for me. But, um, I moved to the town because it was quaint. Uh, it was a great place to raise your kids. I'm concerned with how the town is turning out. It's become a drive-through. The comments about our town versus the other town, um, it's, it's pretty sad. And I, I really don't like what I see. And I'm concerned about the youth. And yeah, they may be young and Elliot, seventh grade. But, um, the more exposure that we have in the town, how do you explain that to, um, a kid that's come from a drug environment? It's not easy. So, um, Kelly Edwards has done a lot with the youth and Shelby also. And, uh, thank God we have that, but I, I really am opposed to it. Don't want to see it. And, um, I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay. Right now, I don't see anybody else, uh, signed up to speak. Does anybody from the commission want to close this public hearing?
I'd like to make a point of order, Mr. Chairman. First of all, uh, my name is Ed Albrecht, I've been, I've been on this commission for a long time. I just want to let you know, because some of the people said that we were lackadaisical and all this stuff. We had a moratorium, we made a moratorium on marijuana. Kelly and Shelby years ago, and it was a unanimous decision that they, we made a moratorium. So now here we are again, because all these people, I'm not going to mention anything, no names. They passed this le- 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 legislation to have marijuana. And now I know for a fact that kids, I, I talked to them, they don't even go to Massachusetts anymore. They go to Maine now because they have the strongest marijuana. So, um, I, I just want to get that straight. And I'm the one that has the tattoo power. So I mean, if people are against tattoos, I'm sorry, but I, 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 you know, I had that tattoo power. So that was me.
Okay, Ed, I, what I was hoping to do was to have us testimony. I want you to speak, us to speak once the public hearing is closed. So what I'm asking is, um, can we get a motion to close the public hearing?
That's what I want to make, I want to make a motion to close the public here.
Second.
Second.
Second from Mike, thank you. Okay, the public hearing is closed. Um, so we now go back to the agenda, which I have to find, I'm sorry. Our next item on the agenda. I'm surprised so many people have left, it's, uh, item E, AR 21 dash 035, which was, uh, the Regulation Amendment for Recreational Medical Marijuana. Is there any discussion from the commission members? This is a good time for that.
If I may speak, I mean, first of all, the overwhelming sentiment among, among the public is to not allow this or at least to have a moratorium. And, you know, we are supposed to be representing the public. I agree with the comments in opposition to it, especially what struck me was, uh, Ms. Inglis and also the police chief's comments. And those were kind of echoed throughout the step, throughout the, um, the hearing. So I think at the very least, we should have a moratorium on the subject. And, you know, and I'd like to point out too, the state hasn't even set forward the standards for this. So I think it's very premature for us to put forward a regulation, um, in approval of this without even knowing what the state standards are going to be. Uh, so again, at the very least, I would ask for a moratorium. I'm more apt to ask to deny this, uh, Regulation Amendment.
Thank you. Ellen?
Yeah, I, I'd like to point out that while everyone is talking at length about how cannabis has been legalized. The state did indeed pass that, but this remains a scheduled narcotic. It is illegal under federal law. Uh, you know, the state has done its, you know, they can pass something, but they can't legalize something that is illegal under federal law. And, uh, you know, we're seeing so much of this lately with states, you know, pushing back against the feds, localities against, it's, it's tearing the country apart.
Yes.
It, this is a scheduled narcotic. It is illegal, you know, no matter what it is pharmacologically, and I have an advanced degree in pharmacology. And I, I know it's not a narcotic in the pharmacological sense, but in the legal sense, it is a scheduled narcotic. It is illegal under federal law. And I don't think that it is, you know, if I were in the legislature, I would never have voted for it, but the voters made a different decision. And, uh, the, you know, it's performance art for the state to legislate, to legalize something that's illegal federally. And I'm opposed to, to us going along with that.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Oh, Martin?
Yeah, I, I have basically, uh, two comments to make. The law currently allows only one dispensary, uh, for 19,000 people. The tradition in the state is that when it has a source of revenue, it tends to increase that source of revenue. So we started off with the lottery, now we have a lottery in Kino, now we have a lottery in, you know, in sports betting. So I wouldn't be so sure that you're going to be limited to one, one dispensary per community, uh, in the long run. Secondly, um, my daughter who lives up in East Hampton, which Massachusetts, which does have a dispensary, has a couple of dispensaries actually, uh, pointed out that among, um, because of the structure of recreational marijuana sales, there's a surcharge imposed on recreational marijuana purchases. Uh, that part of which goes to the community, part of which goes on to the state. If you purchase it for medical marijuana purposes, you only pay the state tax. So it's about half what the recreational charges for marijuana. For recreational marijuana, basically in Massachusetts. So what you're finding happening in Massachusetts, or at least in her community, is that you have all these online businesses that will sell you a, a medical marijuana registry, registration. And, uh, so, so basically you pay your money, you get your medical marijuana, then all you do is pay the state tax. So the extra money that's supposed to be flowing into our local coffers doesn't show up. Because basically they're dealing in medical marijuana. Among a heavy marijuana user, you get substantial savings with a medical marijuana certificate, even if you're a recreational user. So you should be aware, aware of that as well. I, I, I don't think we want to be the pack center of the shoreline. And I think, uh, you know, at some point, given the behavior of the neighboring towns, if we proceed with this, this will end up being.
We, could we deny this or do we, or do we?
Oh, yeah, we, uh, we can easily deny this. I mean, that's, uh, that would be the, that would be the appropriate, uh, thing based on, you know, what we got as testimony.
All right, Ellen, you go, you want to go first and deny it?
Okay.
I'll make a motion.
I'm going to deny, um, uh, AR 21 dash 035 Regulation Amendment, recreational mar- uh, recreational medical marijuana, uh, the applicant, uh, being the town of Clinton, Planning and Zoning Commission, yes.
Second there.
Thank you, Will. Uh, Bo got in there, okay. Um, okay, any further discussion? In that case, Lisa, can we have a roll call vote?
Mike Knudsen?
Aye.
Ellen Dahlgren?
Aye.
Eddie Alberino?
Aye.
Bo Clark?
Aye.
Martin Jaffe?
Aye.
Alan Cravitz?
Aye.
Will Benoit?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. So that motion, uh, to deny has been, has carried.